Now I'll call the May 11th, 2021 Lincoln County Board of Education meeting to order. If you would, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. And to begin with, we will need to strike under F, under consent agenda items, Policy 4400 attendance, off of the agenda. Is there any other deletions or additions to the agenda that need to be made? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion Ms. Avery?
Second.
Second Ms. Ryan. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have special presentations and recognitions, and we'll start with the North Carolina All-State Band, and Ms. Diana Carpenter can present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know about you all, but I'm used to attending these meetings virtually, and I think it's very, very wonderful to see all of these people that are here with us this evening and to be able to recognize some wonderful students and staff members that we have. So we're going to begin this evening with North Carolina All-State Band. I would like to recognize Pearson Rickard, an eighth grade East Lincoln Middle School student, if he would please come up. It is with pride that I share with you that Pearson Rickard, who is an eighth grade student at East Lincoln Middle School and plays the trombone, placed in the North Carolina All-State Honors Band as seventh chair, which is amazing across the state. He represents Lincoln County as the only student to audition and make the honor band this year. These auditions were virtual, so students were expected to learn a page's music scales, which that's not easy, is it Pearson? And they also had to do a selected solo piece. Pearson has proven his determination this past year, and that is said by Ginny Beck, his band director, by learning the solo starting last April, and he took on challenges of virtual auditions in clinics throughout the year to make sure that he was ready. Pearson has been playing trombones since the sixth grade, and of course, he plans to continue, he's an eighth grader, in the East Lincoln High School Band Program next year. So, North Carolina All-State Band, Pearson Rickard, we are so proud of you, congratulations.
Listen to Pearson.
You're on your way. Thank you so much, and congratulations again. At some of our previous meetings, we have heard about this next group that we're going to recognize, and we would like to recognize the 2021, we will call them the Virtual Winter Guard, the East Lincoln Cheval Winter Guard from East Lincoln High School. They participated in the Virtual Winter Guard International Championships, and East Lincoln High School was one of only two North Carolina Winter Guard programs who qualified for the finals, which is amazing. This team finished their competitive season with a rating of outstanding. So, as I call your names, please come forward, and then I'll share a little bit more information about the Cheval Guard. Sidney Allen, Maggie Combs, Carly Costa, Sarah Frye, Lana Eisenhower, Bella Mabe, Ashley Stroop, Cassidy Williams, Laura Woodrum, Aleah Yagoda, and Laura Zacharoskis. Ms. Rachel Frye is the Cheval Color Guard Director, and we also have Mr. Trent Williams with us, who is an instructor as well. Let's give them a round of applause. So, on another note, I have some breaking news. The Cheval Guard chose to submit their performance to their local competitive unit called the CWEA, correct? Yes. So, we've been waiting for the results, and guess what I heard today? On Saturday night, the Caroline Winter Ensemble Association, which is CWEA, our local competitive circuit, announced its circuit champion. Cheval has now won first place in our local circuit in the Scholastic Open Class. This is a wonderful achievement for all of you. You've worked very, very hard, and once again, we've heard about you for a couple of months now, and it just speaks again of your hard work and perseverance of the performance and your staff. You've done an absolutely wonderful job. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much, we're proud of you.
Good evening. It's great to be here this evening to celebrate several of our CTSO students at several of our schools. So, students, as I call out your name, please come forward. The following students representing the FBILA are Lincolnon Middle School and Lincolnon High School students. Clara Parlier is a sixth grade student at Lincolnon Middle School. Clara placed in the top seven in the Career Exploration Mid-Level Event at State Competition. Victoria Lovell is a freshman at Lincolnon High School. Victoria placed in the top ten of the Introduction to Financial Math Event. William Lovell is a sophomore at Lincolnon High School. William placed in the top ten of the Personal Finance Event. And Allison Ramirez is a junior at Lincolnon High School. She placed in the top ten of the Journalism Event. Congratulations to these students for their participation in the State FBILA Leadership Conference, and I also want to recognize Jennifer Looper, FBILA Advisor Emeritus at Lincolnon High School, for her work. Looper, Ms. Looper, come on up. Everyone knows that Ms. Looper retired this past December, but was incredibly instrumental in these students' performance at the district level competition and at the state level competition. Congratulations, Ms. Looper, and congratulations, students. Certificates are coming later. The following students from North Lincoln High School are DECA participants. North Carolina DECA's annual state competition was held virtually this year during late February. Students from across the state, including two of our county's chapters at West Lincoln and North Lincoln competed in a series of different events. Students completed each part of the competition online, including their tests and role-play presentations. Students were given a time and window to complete their event. They had to upload their recorded presentations to a website for a judge to view later. We're proud to announce that the following students placed at this year's virtual state DECA competition. From North Lincoln High School, Carter Slawoski and Hannah Zen. Carter and Hannah, come on up. They placed first place in the Business Law and Ethics Team Decision-Making. And Emma Goodson, Haley Schmidt, and Max Sigmund finished second place in the Integrated Marketing Campaign. These students are advised by the DECA Advisor at North Lincoln High School, Peyton Wilson. Ms. Wilson, you're here, come on up. Because I should tell you, these students wouldn't be where they are if they didn't have the support and the help of the advisors. So, just like students put in a pile of time, the advisors do too. Congratulations, North Lincoln High School students. I will say, as first place and second place finishers, they earned the right to participate this year's International Career Development Conference, which is the International DECA Conference, which was supposed to be held in Anaheim, California, but that event is virtual too, right? Yes. So you missed the trip this year, I'm so sorry. But congratulations, we appreciate you. Thank you. The final chapter to recognize this evening is the West Lincoln High School DECA Chapter. Genevieve Shutt, Genevieve, finished second place in the Human Resources Management Competition at the state competition. And another big congratulations to Genevieve, she was elected as the Blue Ridge Region Vice President for DECA. She'll serve on that team for the 21-22 Student Action Team for the school year, so congratulations, Genevieve. And her DECA Advisor at West Lincoln High School is Mr. Clint Spencer. There again, I'm sure Genevieve would concur that without Mr. Spencer, it'd be hard to be where you are. Very good. Excellent work.
Good evening, I'd like to recognize sports recognitions. First of all, we're gonna go with East Lincoln High School, the men's football team. First of all, I have Markel Clark, All-Conference. Benjamin Cutter, All-Conference, and also the Defensive Player of the Year. Jeremiah Jones, All-Conference. Lucas McConnell, All-Conference. Paul Minigay, All-Conference. Tyler Mizell, All-Conference. Austin Smith, All-Conference. And Trent Smith, All-Conference. We'll send them in the courier. And now, North Lincoln High School Men's Football Team. Daniel Carter. Jack Carter, both All-Conference. Kyle Culva Chuck, All-Conference, and Seth Whitley, All-Conference. Also, the Men's Tennis Team, they were the South Fork 2A Conference Champions, and they also, last week, tied the Western Regional, and they're moving on to the States this week coming up, so I want to wish good luck to the Men's Tennis Team. And the All-Conference players were Colin Bonner, John Alex Carver, and those were the two All-Conference players for the North Lincoln High School Tennis Team. Lincolnon High School Men's Football Team. Amontre Finger, All-Conference. Andre Smith, All-Conference. Bernard Wingate, All-Conference, and Connor Williams, also All-Conference. West Lincoln High School's Men's Football Team. Mason Avery, All-Conference. Samuel Duncan, All-Conference. Curtis Goins, All-Conference. Mason Hewitt, and I saw Mason here, All-Conference, and also, he was Specialist of the Year. Come on up. There you go. Hunter Lenhart, All-Conference. Tubby Neal, All-Conference. Ricky Reynolds, All-Conference. Luke Willis, All-Conference. And Coach Darren Ponder was also selected Coach of the Year for football, so congratulations to these. And I will say this, a lot of baseball games and wrestling meets are going on tonight, and most of these people that I called out that are not here, that's where they are. They're playing baseball or wrestling. Also, Men's Golf for West Lincoln, Lawson Harkey, he was All-Conference. And we just found out about an hour ago that the West Lincoln High School Ladies Golf Team won the state championship at Pinehurst Number Eight, so congratulations to them. And we'll recognize them the next board meeting. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Mr. Cliff Brumfield from our Ed Foundation.
Good evening, School Board. Do have, I believe we have two more members in addition to Dr. Allen from our board that are here. I'd like to recognize Miss Stephanie Porter and Joe Lampron, and I'd like you both to vote if you'd like to. Maybe? Okay. Excellent, thank you. Yes, please. So, our board has normally, in the last few years, awarded four of these technology grants. However, this year, thanks to budgeting, and a couple of our applicants being significantly under the maximum allowable funding of $8,000, we were able to fund five. In addition to that, we did have two applicants that during their presentation did also state that they wished they had asked for more, because they could serve more students, and through the amount of money that our Board of Directors has allocated for this year, we were able to increase the funding of those two to reach more students and to better reach the needs for technology in the classroom. As always, it's very, very moving to hear the applications through our Shark Tank-type panel and hear their presentations, the passion, the creativity that's there amongst our educators in Lincoln County schools is truly amazing and remarkable. If others could see that, and they wish that they could, they would have such great confidence in what creativity that our educators have that they give back to our students. I ask you to come forward, as you were called. Our first recipient is Carrie Monday from Catawba Springs Elementary. Her grant title was Creative Dynamic, Creating Dynamic Digital Designers Using 3D Printers. Her grant amount is $6,300. Next, from St. James Elementary is Catherine Graham. Her grant title is Drawing Tablets Used to Enhance Digital Learning. Grant amount is $7,000. Also, from St. James Elementary is Cindy Jarvis. Grant title Full Steam Ahead. Grant amount is $7,200. Next, from Norris Children's Elementary, Kelton Stone. Grant title The Keys to Success. Grant amount $5,010. And finally, from North Lincoln Middle School, Laurie Dimes, Annette Hevner, Elizabeth Leatherman. Grant title is Play-Away Literacy Project for Middle School Readers. Grant amount is $6,500. Thank you all for what you do, and I would like to encourage your educators, if you do apply and you're not funded, please apply again. We had one this year that's been very tenacious, and this person wrote an outstanding grant application, it was really outstanding in the other years it was presented, but this year it just really went over the top, so please be tenacious, keep applying and working those grants, we'd love to fund you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and so you heard him say, be tenacious, they want to give away the grants. Congratulations. We call it teamwork around here, I think you've noticed that. Our last recognition of the evening, they've all been very special, and this one is just as special. We are going to recognize our of the year recipients for the 2021 school year, and I have to say, this is an amazing group of people that we are recognizing. The first person we would like to recognize is our Assistant Principal of the Year, Chelsea Siegel, and Chelsea Siegel is from Esray Louter Elementary School. Chelsea Siegel, again, was named Assistant Principal of the Year. Ms. Siegel, the current Assistant Principal at Esray Louter, was also recently named as the new principal at Iron Station Elementary School beginning July 1. Esray Louter Principal Scott Carpenter said, Mrs. Siegel is a true instructional leader and well-respected by the students, staff, and parents. She is one of the most loyal, efficient, and dependable assistant principals that I have ever worked with in my 20 years as an administrator. Congratulations, Chelsea Siegel, Assistant Principal of the Year. And thank you, Chelsea, and congratulations. Board members, we're going to continue with the of the year, if you're okay still standing, and if not, we'll just gather back when the other ones are recognized. Next, we have our Bus Driver of the Year, Don Freeman. Don Freeman is from Battleground Elementary School. Battleground Assistant Principal Josh Henderson said about Mrs. Freeman, Mrs. Freeman builds fantastic relationships with students, and since she's been at Battleground for several years, she has created long-term relationships, not only with the students but with the families. She does her job as a bus driver extremely well, but she also uses it, very importantly, as a bridge to build those impactful relationships with those around her. And I'll also say that I have a kite on my office window that Mrs. Freeman came around with her students and put it on my window as a sun catcher, so congratulations, Mrs. Freeman. We're very happy for you. Bus Driver of the Year. Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Our Child Nutrition Staff of the Year is Ginger Wilkinson from Love Memorial. She is unable to be here this evening, but I do want to read to you what was said about Ms. Wilkinson. She has worked for child nutrition for almost 14 years and is the current Assistant Manager at Love Memorial. She's always willing to help out where needed and has been used quite frequently, I think, to fill in when others are absent. Shelley Ryan, our Director of Child Nutrition, said, Ginger is quick to give a smile, and her genuine care for our students is very evident. And even at the schools she's filled in, Shelley often hears how much they miss having her there, and they want to know when she's coming back. So, again, those relationships are very powerful, so congratulations to Ginger, and I know Ms. Ryan will make sure she receives her award, so even though she's not here, let's clap for her. Our Classified Employee of the Year is Mr. Lonnie Dellinger, and Mr. Lonnie Dellinger works here at Central Services. Mr. Donald Welch, our Pre-K Director, describes Lonnie as most of us probably would. He is a very diligent and hard worker, who is one of the most productive people that we know. He goes above and beyond to help with projects that maybe are not even in his lane, but Lonnie helps out in every way he can, and when anything is asked of him. Mr. Dellinger cares about students, and that's evident whenever you see him around the district and also his coworkers. He's always very helpful with any projects that may be here that he's needed to help with or at other sites as well, so Lonnie, I'm happy to be able to congratulate you as a Classified Employee of the Year. Our Guidance Counselor of the Year is Kalen Davis from Catawba Springs Elementary School. Mrs. Davis is responsible for not only the school's counseling program, but classroom guidance, the Positive Behavior Support Program, student recognitions, the MTSS Chair, and other efforts that she seeks out to ensure the physical, social, and emotional needs of the students and staff at Catawba Springs. She is dedicated to the entire Catawba Springs family, whether or not it's students, staff, or parents, and is inspiring. She inspires everyone in the building, and she's very motivating to others as well. So congratulations, Kalen Davis, Guidance Counselor of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Davis. Next is our Media Coordinator of the Year, and that is Mrs. Ellen Lael from East Lincoln Middle School. East Lincoln Middle School Principal Heather Myers has said about Mrs. Lael, Mrs. Lael has gone above and beyond her role this year. In addition to transforming her media center from the traditional library setting to a learning commons, and I've seen it, it's true, she has set technology and media information skills as a priority for her work. This year, she has created three Google Sites as communication tools to better connect with students, teachers, and parents. Mrs. Lael is a passionate educator who cares about the quality of teaching. Mrs. Lael is a passionate educator who cares about the quality of teaching and learning that occurs within her media center and throughout the entire school every single day." So congratulations, Mrs. Ellen Lael from East Lincoln Middle School. Our Principal of the Year is Tracy Ely, as you all know, from Battleground Elementary School. And she was recognized at the October Board Meeting, but we also wanted to make sure we remembered her as well this evening. Now, we are on to our Teacher of the Year. Our Teacher of the Year is Ms. Tasha Stoddard from St. James Elementary School. Ms. Stoddard is the music teacher at St. James Elementary School, and she was named our County Teacher of the Year. She's been teaching three years in Lincoln County and has accomplished many goals in leadership and community outreach, bringing together teachers, parents, and students in multiple ways. She integrates classroom subjects with music. And that was a goal she set for herself in her second year of teaching. Not only did she make sure to incorporate reading, math, social studies, and science into her weekly lessons, but she established open times in her schedule to team teach with classroom teachers in their rooms. Mrs. Stoddard said, and this is a great quote, "I'm lucky to get to live what I love every day. Just like I knew it all those years ago in first grade, I know that what I am doing is what I was always meant to do, making a difference one child at a time." Congratulations, Ms. Stoddard.
Next, we have the Board of Education report out and about. Anybody like to share something from this week? Just like to say, being out in a couple of the schools during Teacher Appreciation Week, it was great to see the PTOs and parents and administration all pitching together to make school a better place for the teachers this weekend for really showing their appreciation for all that they'd done. It was a great show of affection and they really deserved it. It was awesome.
I'll just say, I had an opportunity to visit some of our Eastern Inn schools last week. And that was a phenomenal experience, such a warm welcome. Every school you go into in our district seems to be such a family environment, and that is very heartwarming. Great conversation with principals. Overwhelmingly, the theme was, when I would say, you know, what is it you need? You know, how are things going? Overwhelmingly, the conversation was about our classified employees. And so I just appreciate them, you know, trying to take care of their people. It was a great conversation and a great visit to their schools. So thank you.
I was at East High yesterday and just kind of walked through like the drama area. And they were getting ready for their play this coming weekend. And walked into the theater room and the art folks have created this like map on the floor that was the coolest thing I've ever seen. Like it was so detailed. I mean, it was just beautiful. And he was like, the way he acted was like, yeah, they just threw something together for us. And I'm thinking, this thing's amazing. And just seeing the excitement and the kids and just all the costumes and stuff. And I know North is also preparing for theirs. So it was just so cool just to see something so out of the box and that that's part of our educational system. And we have spots for everybody. So I thought that was encouraging. That was awesome.
Okay, moving along. We have individuals or groups appearing before the board. No one signed up beforehand, but Policy 2310 states that they are able to do so now with matters of emergent nature. Is anyone here that would like to speak to the board? Hey, nothing, I'll move along. We do have a need for a closed session for personnel. And I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters.
Thanks, Ms. Sh.
Push him, Ms. Avery.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ron. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in closed session. We're now back in open session. No action was taken. Move along to action items. First, we have the approval of bids for the dehumidification system. Dr. Allen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We sent this to you yesterday for your review. Board members, we did anticipate bringing this to you earlier. We only had one bid at the original. We only had one bid at the original date of the bid closing, and so we extended it for another five days until Monday, and we still only had one bid. So as part of our practice with extension, we bring the bid and we've opened it. And it is, according to Mr. Putnam and looking at the specs, what was spec'd for this dehumidification system at East Lincoln High School in the two-story building is called an AAON, an AON unit. It's a top-of-the-line dehumidification system that will tie into our current ventilation system at East Lincoln in the two-story. Project timeline, if approved tonight, they will order it tomorrow, and it will be here and be installed before the start of next school year. What has saved us on our cost on this is they're able to utilize the old boiler room at East Lincoln in the two-story building, and we do not have to build a shelter or any cover for this unit. And so because of that, we were able to come in under budget, significantly under budget from what we anticipated paying for this. And you can see the bid tabulation in the final cost in that. So we're recommending to approve Cook Mechanical to install this as soon as they can get it here. Yes, or Cook Mechanical? Yes, sir.
And who drew the specs on that? Was it, you said it specked out?
Randy and worked with the HVAC provider.
Okay.
And then they drew out what was needed, and then Cook's bid on what was needed.
Any questions for Dr. Allen? Entertained a motion. Motion, Ms. Avery. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to add, this is going to be one of our first projects that we would pay for out of the Essers money when it's approved.
Next, we have the approval of a policy to stand up, which stood open for 25 days for input, and that was Policy 7605-8610 Payroll Procedures.
So this policy, we did not receive any feedback. This is based on our payday schedules that have to change based on the state changing it for us. So it just updates our practice beginning next school year.
Motion, Ms. Avery. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consent agenda items for the approval of the minutes from the boardwork session, a monthly meeting for April 13th. The Board of Education, Board of Commissioners joint meeting, April the 22nd. Budget amendments, personnel recommendations, approval of the juice vendor, approval of vendors for child nutrition products, data archive and transcript services, student fee requests, school facility use fee waiver request, policies to stand up for 25 days for input, and policies with minor technical changes that do not require a stand-up. Any discussion on those consent agenda items? Motion, Ms. Avery.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, if you would, take a moment to look at the calendar. We do have the graduations coming up pretty soon. So if you would, let Kathy know which graduations you'd like to attend.
And if you could do that before, preferably this time next week, so we have enough time to get you on their distribution list for each school with the different whatever process or planning that they're going to do for people that are going to be on stage or in the proceeding line or those kind of things, that we can let them know well in advance.
We do have work session June 1st, board meeting June 8th, and then special call board meeting on June 29th.
Yeah. Just a comment about Lincoln High School. It's good to see them use the stadium, first time in 50 years. It's really 200 years, whatever we've been there, but just kidding. It's good to see them use the stadium. I think that's a, it really tickled me when I saw it. So congratulations to the students that get to use that stadium for the first time. Just don't act up.
Plus Delta?
I just wanted, I think this is National Police Officers Week, and just want to take a minute to say thank you to our SROs at our schools and what a good job they do. I know a lot of them get out there and are building relationships with the students. And just a thank you to them for that.
It's good to see all the recognitions tonight and the grants. Really proud of everybody, students and teachers.
Anything else to come forward to the board tonight? A motion by Ms. Avery to adjourn, and a second by Ms. Heather. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now adjourned.